We are recording this meeting. This is the public hearing for... This is the public hearing for the Protected Instream Flow Study Report for the Cold River. It is October 18th at 7:00 PM. The people in real time are at the Alstead Town Hall, which is at 9 Main Street in Alstead. The time is about 7 o'clock and we are going to start now. And here tonight are... We have with us Joe Schmittl. He's the Instream Flow Environmentalist. And I am Wayne Ives, the Instream Flow Specialist for the State of New Hampshire. And we have Ian Corrali. He is the consultant who developed the Cold River Protected Instream Flow Study Report. He is with Gomez and Sullivan. And we are here tonight to take comments on the Protected Instream Flow Report. This is a... Pardon? This is a proposed report and it is part of the Instream Flow Program. It applies... The program does. It applies to all the designated rivers in the state. And the concept is that we're going to maintain stream flows so that we can protect flow-dependent public uses, things like recreational uses and fish habitat and riparian vegetation and wildlife. So the concept under the Instream Flow Program in New Hampshire is to identify a stream flow pattern. We avoid identifying minimum flows. And that pattern is that pattern of stream flows that occurs, that supports those species that because they have been supported for so long under the stream flows that have happened, that we want to maintain that pattern. So with this pattern developed, which is what this report is providing us with, we then go on to manage the withdrawals within a watershed and how much outflow comes from the dams in that watershed in order to develop a management plan that supports those protected flows. So specific to the Cold River, we are holding this public hearing as part of the process for evaluating publicly the proposed Protected Instream Flow criteria. We have held in September a public information meeting to answer questions about the Protected Flow criteria. So the report was made available and the meeting hall was held here again. And it was held virtually. And at that meeting, there were 10 people that were hearing the presentation about the report and answering... We asked... They were asking questions and we were answering those questions. So this hearing is to hear comments. And this is the beginning of the official comment period. At this stage, we are going to receive comments for the next 30 days and respond to those comments as part of the process of establishing the Protected Instream Flows as water quality criteria for the Cold River. These are specific to the Cold River. And so we are getting comments about how people perceive these flow protection criteria. The Protected... The establishment... I'm sorry, what's happened here? All right. Well, the process is that the public hearing leads into a comment response period. Any revisions that are necessary are made to the Protected Instream Flow Report and the criteria. And then we develop this water management plan, which is comprised of three components, where we manage water conservation by water users of certain size. We manage water use operations for those same water users. And we manage dams that are large enough to support relief pulses, pulses that provide a small bit of rain or a small amount of flow similar to a two-day rainstorm. We will also be holding another public informational meeting as part of that water management plan and a public hearing as part of that water management plan. And that happens before the adoption by the commissioner and the implementation of the water management plan. The Cold River Comment Period, as I said, was a 30-day comment period. It will be open until November 17th at 4:00 PM. Where to send comments? Written comments are preferred. We are hearing verbal or oral comments tonight if people are interested. But you can send written comments to my email address, which is there on the screen, or in writing with the postal mail to that address on the screen. And that address is also available on the DES website for the Cold River. So if you look up New Hampshire DES, Cold River, and read into that part of the webpage, you will find this information. It's also in the calendar for this public hearing on the DES webpage. So the comment period is open and the addresses are available through a couple of different avenues, either the Instream Flow page or the New Hampshire DES Calendar page. So at this point, we are opening up the comment period or the floor to receive comments. And anyone who'd like to comment... Do we have anybody that's asked to comment, Joe, on the sign-in sheet? So I guess I'll open the floor up to people that are virtual. If anyone would like to make a comment, I ask that you state your name, what town you're from, and who you represent if it's not you personally. We could be in for a long evening. I think I have to keep the public hearing open until 8:30 in case anyone comes on virtually at a later hour.
Wayne, did you specifically say that the hearing would be open until 8:30?
The hearing hours were set at 7 to 8:30, yes.
Yeah, then I think you're stuck.
You can show a movie.
Yeah, that'd be fun. Can hear comments on what movies someone would like to see.
Well, I was thinking one of the river movies.
Oh, yeah. You could show the Instream Flow video. It'll last for six minutes. It's quite a good video. Ted Deers narrates in very high style.
Hi. My name is Jen Griffin. I live in South Acworth. I don't necessarily have a comment, but I kind of have a question. With the... In my area, the river has changed quite a bit from the storm that came through in August and from other storms. How has the crew been out to look at it since they did their infield assessments and to see if very much of it has changed significantly? And if it has, how does that affect your overall assessment?
That's a good question. I will defer to Ian. Do you have a... Did you hear that question, Ian?
I did.
You probably have to come over here to... I'm not sure. In front of that camera, maybe. If you stand back well enough, you can be heard easily.
We have not been out to see if the river has changed. You know, there could have been changes to habitat and the stream based on large flood events that's happened in the past. It'll happen again. Generally, rivers will change over time, but only on a very specific basis if you were like standing in a certain spot in the river. Sometimes pools will move around, ripples will move around. But overall, we would expect in the long term that unless it was a really catastrophic event watershed-wide, that there wouldn't be substantial changes in like the amount of riffle or the amount of pool or the amount of run, which is really what drives the habitat. So that's basically what I have to say on it. Rivers do change. It's a natural process.
I think one of the findings from the study is that the Cold River is particularly changeable. There was a fair amount of discussion in and about the 2005, 2006 events of record as well. So this is really the nature of this river is that it changes big when it changes.
Yeah, it's quite possible if we did this again. You know, we may have to... It might have to be mapped again or the transect re-selected in order to select, you know, the appropriate locations to do this again.
But in all likelihood, statistically, you'd come up with a lot of the same results.
You'd probably...
That habitat would be here rather than there because now there's a bar where it used to be a pool and vice versa.
Yep, exactly.
Does that help, Jennifer?
It does. Thank you.
I've got a question about the common flow. I'm looking at the... Excuse me. I'm taking from the local advisory committee. Looking at Table 1 in the report with just the common flow CFS. Is that just from one gauge? Or is that an average of the gauge or other gauges?
It's a... I can answer this. It's a... It's set up so that the distribution of flows that are required at various parts of the river are indexed to the USGS gauge that's available to us now. So it is... As you go further upstream and upstream, it's based on a cubic feet per second per square mile. So it gets smaller as you go upstream. And... But the way we index it is at the USGS gauge at Alstead, right over across the bridge here or on the bridge here.
You know, the flows up and down the river are estimated based on that station connection.
What I see from those numbers is that there's such a huge range, from 31 to 480. Where's the... Where's the median?
The common flows represent flows that are suitable for species that really like a lot of flow. And then as you get down to the critical flows, that represents more of a warning level at where things are starting to be stressed. And then the rare flows are where things are severely stressed. But they should happen. Those flows are expected to happen. And despite the fact that they represent a stressful condition, they shouldn't not happen because there are species that like those stressful conditions for fish that like flow. The species that are more suitable or more happy and more happy to survive in the lower flows now have the opportunity to thrive while the other fish have to work a little bit harder. So the distribution of the magnitudes of flow from high flows in the spring to low flows in the summer are mitigated or balanced by the durations that are associated with each of those flows for each of the biologically significant time periods. So in the spring, there's certain high flows for the common, critical, and the rare flows. In the summer, they're much lower. There's also durations that are associated with those that are part of the magnitude. It's not just the magnitude of the flow that matters, but how long you go below those flows. So when you look at those in conjunction, you allow stream flows to happen that are very low, but you don't allow them to happen for long periods of time. So the durations are shorter and shorter at the lower and lower flows. And that allows you to have that pattern of stream flows that needs to be maintained in a river as opposed to saying, this is the magnitude, this threshold of magnitude is the bottom and you can't go any lower than that. We know that flows go below those thresholds and we just don't want them to last for long, long periods of time.
So what are some of the possible controls?
As far as managing to make this happen, it's very limited in this river, which is both good and bad. One of the things that we have for controls is the Cold River Materials operation has a withdrawal on the Cold River. They also have other sources of water that they can switch to. So there's operational controls by the Cold River to reduce their impact on the very lowest of low flows. And then there's the two dams on the watershed, one at the very headwaters, which is Crescent Lake. And the other is Lake Warren, which is only affecting the lower, I think, six miles or so of the river. So Lake Warren, much bigger and more able to be managed if it were to be operated, but it doesn't have very much effect on most of the river. So there's very limited... And Crescent Lake is a fairly large, not a huge lake, a small lake, but it doesn't have a very high dam, so it doesn't have the opportunity. It can't open and release very much water even if it tried to if it were completely open. So there's very limited avenues of management in this lake, in this watershed. But there's also a lot less impact of withdrawals. Rivers that are heavily dammed and have a lot of water users have a lot more stressful conditions, whereas rivers that are already running naturally have a lot fewer conditions that you even need to manage for, largely because we're not changing the reference conditions, so we don't need to operate the management as often. So it's kind of a balancing act of if we need to manage this, we don't have a lot of things that we can do, but we don't need to manage it very often.
This slide that Wayne stood up on the screen is a simulation of should these Protected Instream Flow values have been accepted a year ago, this is what the graph would look like of how the river performed against those values. As you recall, in the spring, we were still in the drought from last year. You can see that the... There was a common, a long period of time in March and April that the river was well below the common flow. We didn't see much of a spring flush this year. That would have caused a management action at that point in time. Shortly, we did get some better rain just about the time the fire period changed and the common value dropped. And then coming into the third fire period, you can see we were generally below the common flow for the whole month of May in June. And then in June, everything turned over. We had way too much rain. And you see one way for the summer during what's typically the low-flow part of the year. And it's just this year is completely backwards. I mean, three or four of the highest flows this year were during the summer when we're typically at vertical flows. And now the river's kind of returned to normal. It's straddling back and forth across the common flow, which is the kind of thing you would expect it to do. How does... I've got a dumb question. How does the common flow compare to, say, a median flow, which would be a statistical middle value?
Well, it's not a common flow alone. It's a common flow with a duration, whereas median flow represents simply the statistical history of that actual day. So it's really not comparable to apply that to it because when we look at this, the common flow and the critical and the rare flows are not magnitudes all by themselves, they're magnitudes with durations. So a median flow is just a magnitude. I guess I should have looked up the rules on public hearings and calling them early.
Well, Wayne, I am probably going to sign off. This is Tracy. I have another meeting that is running concurrently right now, so I might hop onto that since it sounds like there's not a whole lot of debate on this one.
Well, I'm sure you're probably better off doing that than... I was going to make a joke about the controversy that was coming up, but I think that you're probably right.
All right.
Good night.
Good night.
Well, this isn't like a town meeting, but in the last five minutes, somebody's going to come in and vote, think, and call the question again, so.
I haven't asked it on my questions during the designation process.
Well, that was the goal as to, during the informational meeting, is to cover as much information as we could so that everyone had an opportunity to digest it before they had to come up with comments rather than what we had done in the past, which was combine them all in one meeting. Information was being presented and then the comment period started and, you know, the public hearing would end that night. So the hearing... The comment period continued, but...
Jennifer, as well, it's just... It's still a song line.
Do you guys have any seasonal texts this year?
They had some interns with the biodiversity program. They helped us out on electric fishing, but nothing had to help.
I was going to say you could have them watch this presentation if they need something to do.
It's frustrating. I'd like to just chat, but it would be part of the public record. We can't do that.
I do have a question. Does this... The Cold River gets stocked with any, let's say, trout species or is it...
Yes.
It does.
Yeah. And we have seen brown trout in particular.
Yeah, we saw rainbow trout while we were doing some of the surveys, too.
Yep.
Did we get the low water?
Well, we were doing it, yeah, last year during pretty low water. And yeah, I was actually surprised that I came across some rainbow trout down below the Drewsville Gorge down there, all the way down that bar. Yep.
We shot a bunch above Drewsville Gorge this summer while we were electric fishing. It was one of the pocket that flushed six trout all at the same time. It was like horrible in there or something.
In this spot, no?
You know, the water cut back. They were at these clams until the electric shocker came along.
Well, in the summer, if the water's a little bit warm, they'll all congregate in some of the coldest places.
Right. In fact, it's probably was on the high side of the road that they were on, so it was probably groundwater seeping in, excluder than the rest of the river water.
Pardon?
Could you bring the Department of Environmental Services songbook on?
Yeah.
If we could sing song.
It would be entertaining, at least.
Is that still up in the program or is it discontinued? I don't recall how the report said.
What was that said about Atlantic salmon?
Putting salmon eggs in... Talking about what had been done on the Connecticut. And I remember there was a scene that there was a part where it had been done in the Connecticut, but it had been terminated and had really extended this far more than that and has turned its balls and stuff like that.
Yeah, I can't remember how far up the actual Atlantic salmon stocking program used to go. One way they typically do that is to stock fry or eggs up in the watershed in tributaries.
I participated years ago in a lot of... Put a million finlings into a tag river.
Yep. But in the Connecticut watershed, that's all been discontinued now. There are fish passing... There are fish passage facilities on the lower dams in the Connecticut. Should salmon, you know, occasionally move through them, but aren't really any or many left.
Do you still have any sturgeon in the Connecticut?
Yeah, there's short-nosed sturgeon below Turner's Falls and Holyoke Dams. Very unique population there, the Turner's Falls.
Have there been any signs of algal blooms during hot weather, low water, in a river set in the Cold River?
We don't specifically look for that during this program, but I have not, so I haven't really looked up to see, but I'm, I'm not familiar with any that have been,
I think there was a blue green algae in Lake Warren this year.
Was there?
That was hearsay. I'm not sure.
There are trophic studies that are done periodically on some of the lakes that I'm not sure when the last time either Crescent Lake or Lake Warren were, were addressed, if they've even been in the, in the, in the process. But sometimes that information is available through lake studies that are done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And our bureau has a, a program that specifically covers the salmon that give these, they track them across the state. So we will have a reference for that, something we can check.
The National Lake Association has lots of information on invasive, you know, quiet plants in the tributary.
This is better than the alternative of a boisterous, raucous meeting with a lot of people yelling at each other.
Yes, it's much better than that. And has the police dragged anyone?
We were about to call them, so you get it. You should behave yourself.
You should sleep when I never talk to you.
I don't think I want.
I was hoping David Moody, he's a hydropathologist, he's on the commission. He loves anything to do with water, but he may have forgotten. He's an elder. You know about it. So what is the next step after this hearing? I know you missed some things, but there was a lot of them.
Well, the comments.
The comments, yeah.
As we take the comments, we will review them and decide whether they should result in a change to the, the report and/or the criteria, the protected flow criteria that are on that executive summary that, that was sent out. And if they do, then we make those revisions and revise the report and make a final, a final protected in-stream flow report for the Cold River. And then I document the, some things that are described in the, in the rules and in the statute about what I need to present to the commissioner so that he can make a decision. So I put together a document that's called the Establishment Document or Declaration and submit that to the commissioner, and he reviews it and makes a decision. And hopefully that decision is to establish those protected flows, and then usually there's a public announcement of some sort. And from there, we have the, the information we need to complete the development of the water management plan. So we say, here's what we need to accomplish, and then we look back at the historical flows and say, here's what we had to deal with as far as violations of those protected flows, and what can we do about that? And so that's where we take the three available, the dams, the two dams and the one water user, and say, this is what is, you know, the worst possible case of doing nothing, or the best possible case of doing everything, and, and can we, can we meet these flows? Now, the in-stream flow criteria expect a certain, the calculations of those criteria expect a certain failure rate. So once every 10 years, we expect stream flows to actually go below those lowest duration, those lowest flows, and to extend beyond the durations. And that's part of the expectation of the criteria, that those have been calculated in such that, you know, we're not trying to manage every single low flow, but some of those low flows should continue to happen and be maintained within the record. So that water management plan gets developed, and we do this public process again. And then it goes through that similar process of presenting information to the commissioner, and a similar process of adopting the water management plan. So, and then we do the work of working with the water users and the dam owners to, to make their part of the plan happen. And it can take up to five years, or even with an extension, another five years, to complete those, those preparations to complete their water management plans. We have a, a plan that says, this is what we intend to do as a water user, and this is what we intend to do as a dam. And, and then we have a certain period of time to make some of those things happen. And, then after that, theoretically, things just go swimmingly along. We keep track of... We use this tool right there to say, when do we need to manage something? And, and the water users have access to this online. And theoretically, they will at some point be required to keep track of it on their own without any prompting from DES and follow their management plan. So, at the beginning, we kind of remind people and guide them and explain to them that it's likely to be a, a management issue at some point in the near future. And kind of warn them of things like this so that it's, it's not a surprise to them when they, when their management is expected, so.
So it's one major user, that's Cold River Materials.
Yeah.
And so, if there's, you know, low water to the point where they're overusing, I mean, when, can you actually talk to them and say, you know, you have to co- or do some, you have to do a different water source, or?
Well, there's several things that they can do between the, the water conservation plan and the water use plan. And they have said that there's some things that they are thinking about doing anyway. And so, once we give them some idea of what the criteria are, you are allowed to withdraw water regardless of circumstances to some level because we have that capability in the rules to allow a small, a very small portion of this, of a very small portion to be used. I mean, stream flow is relatively big compared to water withdrawals in most cases, but when you get down to super low flows...
They're located.
Well?
Where are they located?
Yeah, I mean...
They're perfect downstream.
Yeah, they're not drying up the river by taking the, you know, the 600 gallons a minute that they, they might take several times a day. But, so we'll, we'll work with them to try to reduce their impact. You know, usually what a water management plan does in the water use phase is to reduce the impact and delay it and spread it out over time. So there's things you can do that, you know, if, if someone withdraws huge amounts of water over a very short period of time, one way to make it less impactful is to spread that over the course of a, a longer period of time. The other alternative is to say, you start taking water, they have two water sources. One of them's outside the watershed. So they might want to decide, I don't want to be bothered with trying to check and keep track of the conditions. I just want to take the water from a different place that's not affecting the Cold River at all, and, and use that. Or they may change their water conservation so that they have more paved surfaces and don't need to dust control nearly as much. So, were they to reduce the amount of water that they need, that allowable water withdrawal would probably suit them if they were to spread it out over the course of the day. So there's ways to store it in a tank and then use it as often and as quickly as they want. As long as they're pumping a small amount from the river and putting it in that tank, it won't have as big of an impact on the, on the Cold River as a large, fast withdrawal, you know, sharply, acutely during, made during the day. So, there's ways to kind of look at this, and it's kind of up to them what they, which they prefer. So we just tell them, here's the criteria we're trying to meet. And they'll say, well, I'd like to do this with this or that, or another thing rather than one, you know, this way.
On next to the recycling center behind the headboard.
Yeah, that's in the Connecticut watershed, not in the Cold, so. Yeah, that would be, that would be one of their... They would have to re-pipe something maybe to, to do that. So it would, it would be a cost to them to address that. But they, they have pipes going over to their plant already anyway, so. I, I don't know the entire ins and outs of what would, you know, be the most interesting or approachable for them. So, that's what, that's where we go when we talk to them and say, you know, here's what we're trying to accomplish. What, what is it that's, you know, what do you see as the low-hanging fruit that you can do that would make this happen? And, and do we need to do any more than that? So.
Other than fish species, I didn't see anything in the report relative to other wildlife, such as otters, beavers, and deer geese of the river and habitat.
We, we generally have an assessment of all the riparian species that we can identify both by looking at the Natural Heritage Bureau database that tells us that they have rare, either plants or animals that are identified, but that's only a partial study. It usually is related not to a comprehensive study, but to someone's anecdotal or periodic, just run into something and then report it to Natural Heritage Bureau. What Ian and the Gomez and Sullivan people did was walk the entire... What Ian and the Gomez and Sullivan people did was walk the entire length of the river to look for both plant species and any evidence of, of animals that would represent species that needed to be supported by stream flows. And so they've, they've done a lot of, you know, of, of stream walking to identify what is there on the water that would need to be supported. I don't know if you can.
One of the reasons we focused on fish is because there's a tangible relationship between their habitat and stream flow. And also with the riparian habitat as well, you have inundation of plants. Now, if you preserve, you know, those aspects, the natural flow paradigm theoretically will also preserve other aspects that, that are then kind of secondarily protected. So if you protect the habitat for fish, you know, you have food for otters.
So you're, so you're using fish and insects as indicators?
Plants, actually. Fish and plants for the most part.
In the case of the Cold River, we also have, and we've done this with the other rivers so far, that there's a recreational component of human use so that we use surveys to identify what flows people use for various boating types of activities. And so if they're whitewater boaters, they usually will like a range of flows. On the lamprey, it was both whitewater and canoeing. And so we generated numbers that represented suitable flows for those types of activities. Now, in the cold, we didn't see anything that represented any boating activity. And apparently it's been several years since someone tried to do any whitewater rafting and it seemed like it was a one-time event that they did that. So we haven't identified any flows that represent suitable flows for, for recreational boating in this watershed.
Prelimarily, we had identified some like potential like put-in and take-out places based off of our, like our internet search. And when we were there on site, you know, it's all like grown in, in a lot of places. There's not necessarily put-ins or take-outs where it said there was, you know, maybe, maybe one day it was, or maybe it was a small group of people who used it at the time, but.
There's not, not very good access points where you can get a, a long enough run.
Right.
If you, if you put it at 12 a, you gotta come up at the gorge and it's not for, it's not a long run.
Yeah.
So that seems. So that seems to be what we were finding was that there's just limited interest and opportunity that other people would go other places rather than in here for boating.
It's also, and it's also very flashy, so it'd be hard sometimes, I think, for some boaters to just, you know, find the, the right flow necessarily. You know, the flow comes up and the flow comes down and.
Exactly.
The flow that's up is too cold to bring water.
Right. On, on some rivers, it's, it's a little more gradual, I guess, or maybe predictable sometimes. I feel like the cold is just so flashy, it'd be hard.
This is very rocky. Near the 2,000 foot, there were cars and kayaks wandering all over the place after, the day after, looking for water. And I, they were looking at devastation. I don't think they found much water.
Yeah, right.
A lot of water, a lot of, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, you see the way those peaks drop off or after that peak's low, it dropped by five times the next day. Dropped to a fifth of what it was because that's a log scale, so half of one of those waters is like five.
That was one of the challenges we actually had doing the work out there for fish habitat too is for our models, we had to collect measurements at different flow rates. And to actually get out there at a specific flow rate, you know, can be tricky, other than the, you know, summer-based flow. Oh, this year, summer-based flows aren't really there either.
Yeah.
No, no, it was, it was hard in that direction for the people who are doing studies this year.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I'm warmer.
Yes, we do.
I mean, I just wanted to warn you that apparently this isn't the cord that goes through this computer. It's not charging, so it's just running on battery, occasionally low battery.
Yeah, I had an issue with that this afternoon. I thought that would work.
So if this goes, I don't think, I mean, you're still going to be in the meeting, I guess.
Okay.
Seeing it coming on or off, I'm losing the camera.
Thanks for letting me know.
Right now, let me take a screenshot, just put it on.
Dick's just got to hold real still. I just remembered what that blank slide was. Somehow I managed to get the, that blank slide during the presentation was supposed to have this on it and I somehow managed to pull up the wrong PowerPoint that did not have it in there, so.
It took me so much time and effort.
I know, it took you forever to, to pull that page out. Now, I'll just leave it alone.
I have the signing sheet, unless you'd like it.
Hang on to it.
I've been looking through the reports to see if there's any like a question or comment and it's, it's very well done and worked, very well done.
There's a great comment. Glad, Ian would probably be very glad to hear that.
Especially compared to the earlier ones we've got.
Now, now.
It is, well, no, no, they, they were good, but they, there was a lot more information in them and made it harder to follow. And this is just the right amount, from, from my perspective, I think.
The next one looks this way. The water's going to have 10, 15 users, a couple new dams.
Has some dams on it. Has more active whitewater flowing, stuff like that.
One of the nice things about this river at Limerick is it is remote. And it has no urban influence, joy. So it's a nice natural system.
Yeah, it's one of the least altered, relative. I guess the obvious exception would be where some of the highways are kind of close to 123A, the 123A in particular.
When, well, when they rebuilt the bridge on 123A, we got them to remove some obstructions down in the bottom to prevent fish passage upstream. And they were very brutal to pull that, pull all those structures out.
For us, it was a nice place to work. I mean, it was with the roads kind of going along and it was easy to access. So we were able to take full advantage of that, but it wasn't like ever like, you know, there's some people out there, like, for the most part. Nice and quiet. Those different falls areas are pretty gorgeous, too. Drewsville Gorge, and there was another one further upstream.
I've traveled to two or three places working, working more on the cold, but I don't know if you're aware of that. To see, she's never been to Close Place State Park, and that's usually where everybody else is pregnant there. Only when you're near Drewsville Gorge, she appreciates that.
Yeah.
It's just every little town is beautiful. You guys deserve it. Every little town is beautiful. You guys are lucky to live there. It's a beautiful spot.
You don't want to keep it this way.
Beautiful slate of water. Well, it helps me that happen.
Google Maps helps out by making people get lost on their way here.
I think they wander all over else here.
I had it coming out here one day, one of the first trips we made out here. It was just... I saw the turn, a turn, and I was like, no way, you know, no way that road goes through. I kept going and it wanted me to turn again. I was like, there's not even a road there. Keep going until there's a road that looks traversable.
Well, I could go down completely, you know, suddenly my dog stops moving on the back. It's like, aw.
One of the guys I was working with for our parents' stuff ended up on one of those backroads. And he kept going until to the point where he was like, yep, I'm going to have to have a chainsaw to get through. There were trees down and...
Google Maps still has a lot of classics words about these roads.
We had a lot of trees get cut this summer, a lot of logging going on outside. And one of the... one of the logging operations has managed to buy the top of the watershed for Camp Brook. And it's... we would have to have our parents to get access, so it doesn't have by the way in there. It's the only piece. And he's going to add it to his conservation piece.
Absolutely.
Because he has a... it's a beaverwood pre-farmed.
They did a selected cutting, didn't they?
They, they did a clear cut, pretty much. And then across the road, maybe... they took as much as they could at night, and it was all planted. It wasn't super selective, that's for sure. I guess you could call it fine, really, you know?
More cutting clear, or more clearly cut.
It's just, you know, you walk in, there's just no trees, so I... And I'm glad that that piece, which is over 20 farm acres, I guess, and it's just go, go right with his disease. All that uncertainty is on. It's really wonderful to see that. Protect those warships.
Well, thanks, everybody, for your patience.
We can still, you know, have a little conversation. Thank you for coming all the way out here. Sitting around.
Relaxing.
Yeah, if you have a good chance.
All right. I have 8:30 exactly, and I'm closing this hearing of the protected in stream flow study on the Cold River.